The May 23, 2024 meeting is now called to order. Director Mills is excused for this evening. The first agenda item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Principal Frick, would you lead us?
Please.
Thank you.
At the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does the board have any recommended changes to tonight's agenda?
No.
No. Right, the next item will be the Oath of Office for Board Director District Number One. Becky Erickson, City of Paulsboro Mayor, will ensure the oath of office to the newly appointed Director of District Number One, replacing Rick Eckert, which should be Mr. Edward Wright.
There we go. I want to say thank you for inviting me here this evening. It's always an honor to come in and swear in the new school board members. I want to say thank you to the school board. Your level of volunteerism for our community is... Your level of volunteerism is deeply appreciated. Thank you very much and for everything you do. You are entrusted with the well-being of our children, and I can't think of a more important function that you could serve as a public servant, so thank you. With that, I'm going to do the talking, so now I'm going to do the swearing, okay?
Okay. Could you raise your hand? I say my name.
I, Edward Wright.
To solemn swear.
To solemn swear.
That I am a citizen.
That I am a citizen.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the city of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Dylan ability.
Dylan ability.
Truly.
Truly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
Partially.
Performing duty.
Performing duty.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
North Kitstop School District Number 400.
North Kitstop School District Number 400.
This Director District One.
Director District One.
In and for.
In and for.
Kitstop County, Washington.
Kitstop County, Washington.
As such duty are described by law.
As such duty are described by law.
Congratulations.
Come on up, thank you. Thank you for coming, Rick, and thank you, Mary Erickson. Okay. All right, the next agenda item is recognitions, which will be the Seal of Bilinguality. The board recognized the students who have achieved their seal of bilinguality. Will recognize, excuse me.
Joelle, will you please help me?
All right. Okay, so we want to recognize the following students for this great achievement. These students have proven not only to be bilingual, but also they can read and write in two or more languages. So congratulations to all of you. You're awesome. Anthony Chales Antonio. Luna Garcia. Brian Herrera. Jennifer Montalvo Martinez. Michelle Ramirez. Brandon Ramirez Larios. Juan Pablo Larios Hernandez. Philip Warwick, sorry. Brisa Ayala Pacheco. Jesús Mares. Erica Martinez Perez. Jennifer Moran, Damari Jennifer Moran. Alex Gonzalo Pablo Pablo. Ingrid Borchio. Jasmine De Luna Harrods. Nicholas Smith Copril. Carmela Target. Anna McDaniel. Illy Hondurasco. And Leonel Larios Castro. Congratulations.
Get your hair to come on up, okay?
Okay, thank you, and again, congratulations. The next agenda item is school connections. The Board of Directors would like to thank Mr. Craig Frick, Principal Pearson Elementary School, and Travis Smith, Vineland Elementary School Principal, for preparing and presenting the Pearson Elementary School and Vineland Elementary School data. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Rachel Javonport, Craig Frick, and Travis Smith to present the Pearson Elementary School and Vineland Elementary School data.
Thank you both for being here. Craig, would you please start us off with Pearson?
Yes, absolutely. Members of the board, public, thank you for having me here this evening. I am the principal of Hildreth Pearson Elementary School over by a key port. Tonight, we're going to be talking about our school and the progress of our students this year, the culture of our school, and our academic data, where we're planning on going. I'm going to approach this the way that our staff works with it. We look at our data, we analyze our data, we look at our building systems and goals, and then we set action plans for how we're going to address areas of need and help support our students move forward. Our first area will cover our youngest learners in K through 2. We'll be looking at some of our English literacy data and our math data for K through 2. At this age, we're really working to help kids develop socially, emotionally, to become creative problem solvers, to learn how to take risks that helps forward their learning, and also really start to set the expectations for rigor in achievement in academics, in math and reading. Some of our data for our K through 2 students is present here. As you can see, our kindergarten and second grade students have made a significant amount of improvement in their composite scores for reading, but our first grade students are struggling in that area. When we see data like this, it shows us some of the highlights and lowlights areas to focus on as we move forward. This is mid-year data for our K through 2 students. And once we had this, we sat down as a staff and analyzed each grade level and then began getting into the individual student level and thinking, what are we going to do next here to help our students advance? What you see on this slide is a targeted learning plan for a student in second grade. This is targeting a very specific goal of improving his ability to produce letter sounds, and it's being tracked through progress monitoring. So over the course from August here up and through January, he was monitored every two weeks in terms of the progress that the student was having in relation to the goal. As you can see, he started out two grades below grade level, and by the benchmark in December, the beginning of January, had already reached up to one grade level below. So it improved over that course of time, one full grade level in his performance. And we can project, based on this data, that he will likely be on the bubble here at the end of the year for moving to grade level proficiency. This slide, I think, tells a greater story. I had a conversation with a teacher. This slide represents part of my professional growth goals and also her professional growth goals in second grade, and how we were working with this specific group of students. There are 12 students in this specific group that all are performing similarly, and we looked at our data together and talked about where those students were. 10 of those 12 students were on track to reach grade level performance by the end of the year, which was very exciting. Looking at it from a systems level, two students were not at that level, and we noticed that both of those students were in our student support team. They were picked up through our MTSS system, which is a multi-tiered system of support for students, so that they could start to get more intensive services. And so looking at those 12 students, we could say that our system, our school, was providing support for all of them appropriately.
And then what grades is that tracked for?
We do that progress monitoring for students in all grades.
Okay.
That are in our lowest groups for both math and we're working, excuse me, for reading, and we're working on developing those systems for math. We do track them for math, but we're going to be doing a much more intensive system next year that I'll be talking about a little later in our action steps.
Thank you.
This is our iReady math data, also for our K through second grade students. And as you can see, we have large bands of yellow. And what the large bands of yellow here mean are that those students are one grade level below at the mid-year point. Many of them are on the bubble as they're growing up to reach grade level proficiency, and that's fairly exciting for us because it gives us a real target to help those students. And we know exactly, due to our data systems, what areas and what content standards they need supporting. And they've really been targeting, supporting those students. So when we are going to be collecting that data here, starting the end of next week and in the beginning of June, we're really excited to see how those interventions that we've done as a school, whether that's at the teacher level or in working in our PLC teams, will impact these students' growth from mid-year until the end of the year.
Can you give us an example of some of those interventions?
For math?
Yeah, that you're doing differently than you were, say, in December or January.
Well, when we assess the students at the mid-year data point, we group the students out into several different groups, probably four to five different groups, that we then create differentiated supports for in the classroom. We will then group and work with those students individually for a half hour a day and target them with the standards that they need. So whether that's math and operations, or fractions, or algebraic thinking, then we're giving those students additional help in those areas and really trying to elevate them. Our math data has been pretty consistent over two years, but consistently not high enough. And so when we look at some of the plans that we have later, we're planning on addressing that as a building and having some more, I would say, concentrated interventions there and more time committed to students at particular levels.
Thank you.
Our goals here are that 80% of our students in kindergarten through first grade will perform at grade level in their core reading by the end of the year. However, we do see that there is a significant opportunity for positive change as well in our math grades. Our math scores, we've set a goal of 65%, and if you look at where we were starting out with grade level proficiency, that's moving from approximately 25% to 65% by the end of the year. And our teachers are really digging in, and as I showed with the English Language Arts data, looking at it at the individual student level. This slide also captures, I believe, some of the same data that I was just sharing with you. And also, our students of greatest need, our students that are either in our special education department who are being served in our ISP intensive services classroom or in our resource classroom, we're looking to have 80% of those students make one and a half years of growth in relation to their grade level proficiency by the end of the year. Our action plan is, I believe, multifaceted. While we're looking at targeting interventions and planning, we also have systems-level discussions as a building. And when we talked about, what are we doing well? We found that we're doing a good job with our ELA, our English Language Arts, and our supports for readers who are, you know, two or one grade level below proficiency. We found that our supports for math need to be adjusted. And so our goal for next year is to start to divide our students by groups, utilizing the iReady data that we have, which helps to group our students, and then really providing for a full half hour of targeted intervention for those students at that specific level by dividing students across our grade bands and with teachers. This is something that we've been working towards for a couple of years, but the staff looking at the need has risen to that and are looking at ways to solve that for next year. So I'm very excited moving forward, what that might look like. Moving into Goal Two, we're going to be looking a little bit at our climate and culture data, also our family data and attendance. We're looking to help our students be more creative thinkers, solve problems, real-world problems, and even tackle project-based learning that helps them learn through engineer thinking, thinking the process all the way through. What do I want to achieve? How do I achieve it? Can I build something to help me do it? And we're also looking for opportunities for students to model positive behaviors that reinforce their strengths, their health, and their physical well-being. We have a fairly robust leadership team at our school. We have two different leadership teams at our school. We have one team that focuses on kind of systems-level support for the school, and another team that focuses on student-level support. Both teams participate in volunteer opportunities, and we really try to give the kids opportunities to work with real-world problems. This year, the students ran two volunteer opportunities. We brought in over 1,000 items for the fish line through a volunteer opportunity in the fall. And then one of our leadership teams, Angered for Life, which is supported by the Navy, did a volunteer opportunity in collaboration with Paulsboro Rotary and the City of Paulsboro Parks Department to help bring a pollinator corridor to Paulsboro. And the first project was at the American Legion Park downtown. So if you get a chance, take a look, that's all student work. Through this, we hope to help students develop a better ability to regulate their emotions and to deal and cope with challenging feelings. And we're also looking to increase our percentage of families that respond to our surveys who indicate that our school is a great fit for them and that they also agree that we have a good school culture. Here's some of our student data. This is the most recent data from this spring. 80% of our students say that they have a great student-teacher relationship, and I gave this data to our staff yesterday, and there was a cheer that went out. I mean, this means a lot when kids are recognizing that they're being championed by their teachers. Our school belonging is down since the mid-year data, but overall, it is stable this year. I will talk a little bit later in our action steps about things that we're planning on doing there to help improve that. Our family results show the majority of our families feel that we have a good school climate and a good school fit. And we had an average this year of 27% of families responding to our survey, which is a significant increase over last year. And we have plans in place to build on that progress and that momentum.
Craig, is this just third, fourth, and fifth graders?
So the school-student culture and climate data are the third, fourth, and fifth graders, yeah, and the families are all respondents. Next slide, please. This is our staff climate and culture survey and attendance. Educating all students, our staff feel and teacher efficacy is quite high. They feel that they are able to reach every student and are effective in their job. The question that I highlighted here, I thought, was really interesting. I enjoyed this one the most. It said, "When one of your teaching strategies fails to work for a group of students, how easily can you think of another approach to try?" And 100% of students, teachers, said yes, that they could find another approach. And this is something that we focus on in our professional development throughout the year. We look to build teachers' access to interventions. We have supports through our multi-tiered system from either our resource room or our ISP room or our counselor or myself to go in and provide assistance. So teachers know where to find interventions, can find them quickly, and can create plans and goals to help elevate students. So that was a really important one. Our school climate, I'd like to just finish on that one. Our school climate, however, did go down, and there were some significant areas there that we have a lot of improvement, areas of improvement to do. I was very encouraged yesterday when I showed that to staff because the comment back was, "Okay, folks, what are we going to do?" It wasn't a look to you and what's the solution. It was in multiple conversations, both in full staff and afterwards in team meetings, what are we as a staff going to do to address that? And I found that extremely encouraging because that is that team mentality that we are working so hard to build and sustain at school. Our attendance data has also, you leave it on the next slide. Our attendance data has also improved significantly this year. We've had an initiative all year to track our attendance, class by class, and with our families, and it's paying. Our action plan, there's a few things listed here, but one of the main things I want to talk about is just really focusing on that family-school connection next year. We redesigned our MTSS triangle to create a foundation of home underneath that. It's always been embedded in our MTSS triangle, but it's been hard to draw out. And so I think in putting that foundational piece at the bottom of our triangle and illuminating how information and systems are shared between home and between the schools will allow us as a system to address that piece very intentionally next year. We're increasing our number of family nights at school. We're going to be increasing nights that focus on social-emotional learning, giving families tools that we use at schools. We have shared language around social-emotional development. Fleet and family night, where we can connect with our military families, which is almost 35% of our families. So we have a lot of action coming forward there. Our Goal Three focuses on data for our upper grades. We're looking for, in our upper grades, an increase in students who advocate for themselves. And I think that, talking about our leadership teams earlier, other opportunities for kids to find purpose in school and outside of school that are connected really help with these goals. We can go ahead and move on to the next slide. I'll talk a little bit about this data. This is our English Language Arts data, third through fifth grades. Fairly strong here at the middle of the year. We're now collecting our end-of-the-year data of students that are at or above grade level. These things are also reading their comprehensive ability to read and connect their learning. Our math grades, these scores were taken a couple of months ago and are also what we're working on overall. You see, our third grade is down around 40% of students that are at or above. And we had a couple of months to work on that. We put in some real significant interventions there and supports and some extra resources to help. And our fourth and fifth grades are looking to increase their proficiency in those areas over 70%. Our student climate survey shows that students are focused academically and are building their resilience and their ability to tackle problems and cope. Here, students are responding that 80% of students feel that they come to class prepared, which is, I think, a great statistic, and also that they can follow directions in class, which I kind of like, that they actually acknowledge that, "Yep, yep, we can do that," which is really wonderful. I think we go ahead and move to the next slide. So our action plan across the building is to build engagement and instruction in the classroom. We are working to create an environment in our classroom where students feel confident in addressing real-world problems and working together collaboratively. And teachers are feeling confident with the core curriculum and the material where they can help guide and facilitate that process for students. We do that through utilizing an Avid system that we have through the district, but also just really getting in and focusing on what does it look like when students work together and solve problems together. We have a time at the end of the day where students get in and they do Makerspace work. They can do kinetic art or performance arts, and there's a lot of opportunities for different types of learning that bolster academic learning. Thank you very much for having me. This is a sign that we have hanging up in our building that says, "We are the future." And our students are owning that every day, that they're going to be our 21st century leaders, and we need to do everything that we can as a staff to support every single one of the kids in our building. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Excellent presentation. I'll open it up to questions here in a second. I'll probably just go first. First, with a comment, appreciate your connection with Naval Base Kitstop. That's a very important connection, and I look forward to that relationship growing. I think there's a lot of resources there available we can take advantage of. You mentioned the 20% increase in family response for the Panorama survey. Was there any thing in particular you did to drive that, that's a pretty significant increase?
Yeah, I put that up to our front office staff, and they came up with a system where it was easy for families just to check yes or no on a form, had I done it. And if they checked yes or no, their students got this cool sticker for their computer. And so now we've got a sticker for every one of these things that we do, which is two a year for our families. And kids are getting them on their computers, and there's some competition going, and the kids want it. So they go home and like, "Hey, don't forget to do it. We did our survey at school today, you know, do your survey at home." But again, I really feel that building those family nights and more encouragement to have families come in and engage with us throughout the year are going to also increase those numbers.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Hopefully, we share that with the other schools. Speaking of the family nights, so math recovery post-pandemic continues to be a focus across all of our elementary schools. Is there a possibility of taking one of those family nights and just showing parents what tools are available to them, what resources they have, so that they can do math at home with their students?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that question. That's our first one in September. It's going to be a curriculum night. And it is exactly that because with our new systems, we have amazing resources at our fingertips, both for teachers and for families. And just helping them know when the information is going to come from our teachers, that connection piece, what's going out from our classroom and newsletters, how units are introduced, how the lessons are introduced for that week, and giving parents the tools to say, "Okay, here's what my student's going to be learning. Here's how the teacher's going to be teaching it, and here are the things that I can do this week to support my student." And that's a collaboration then between the teacher and the family. So the families expect every week, we're going to see what's happening in class, what are the tools I can access, here's the link to the PDFs, so that they can help us at home achieve better results.
Great, appreciate that focus.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for a well-organized, easy-to-follow presentation. And I was wondering, your second-grade teachers next year are going to have quite a challenge on their hands getting all those kids up and reading at grade level. Is there an Avid coach available to you more than three times a year at your building?
We drive most of the Avid internally in our building through our Avid site team. And we have a couple of teachers that are on it. We're hoping to go to the Avid seminar in Seattle this summer, looking at ways that we can continue to build on those strategies. But also alongside that, what we're doing is we're trying to embed that in our practice. So look at where strategies fit best with certain core content. So look at where strategies fit best with certain core content pieces and the interventions that are available for teachers so they can just pull from a list without having to dig too deeply. So we do that work and make it available to them because they're very, very busy. And we want to get the right kinds of interventions in place.
That will be very helpful with the new curriculum now that they know the stories.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't have, I think you've answered all the questions that I had, but I just want to thank you for the work you're doing. And please pass on a big thank you to your team and all your staff in your building. This is, was a great presentation and lots of data. It was just great. Thank you.
Yeah, I will do that. Thank you.
I guess my question is more of a process question, but I was looking at your data points here. Are you using a commercial survey, you know, like Survey Monkey or some other service like that for your, for your surveys with your?
Great question, and welcome, by the way, to the board and to the district. We use a system called Panorama. It's a nationwide support system for schools, school information system. And it has built-in surveys that give us nationwide data points to assess where we are in relationship to other students of the same age across the nation. We can toggle between looking at how we compare nationally to how we compare within the North Kitsap School District. So the questions are all normed, and they're fairly, I would say, comprehensive across a number of different areas.
Are these closed-end questions or are they open-ended to where?
Full.
Once they've responded to the question, they can actually give a thought or a comment?
I think Jeremy might be better to respond to that than I am, but there are both of those types of questions. And in the free response questions, we're starting to get some of the internalized information, emotional information that is very valuable to us in looking at how we can support kids. And when they contemplate and respond to certain questions, it's, we just this spring got some data that helped flag some students that weren't caught in other parts of our system with information that otherwise we wouldn't know. And we can reach out and look to help those kids. So I think building on that type of, of data is very important.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Well, again, thank you very much. Excellent show.
Thank you, Greg. Travis.
Sure will. Thank you. Thank you, School Board, for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity, Superintendent Davenport. Nice job, Mr. Frick, set the stage. Travis Smith, Principal of Vinland Elementary. Some staff members in the audience tonight, thank you for being here. It's always fun to see your faces. Vinland Elementary, home of the Dolphins. We have sixty-three adult Dolphins and over five hundred and twenty-one little Dolphins that are highly active in our building every single day. We have a phenomenal school with great support from, not only internally, but also from our community. But just like Craig, it might be deja vu. We're going to be sharing a lot of the same slides, so I'll probably do my own little twist on some of this information so it's not a repeat of some of the actions.
This is when Travis does his entertainment.
That's what I was just going to say, you know. I can't sing, I can't dance, but I can, I figure something else. So we have four, uh, three key areas that we're going to be looking at tonight. We're going to be talking about our key data sources, our focus, student goals here at Vinland Elementary, and then what are our action steps? Right now, being at the end of the year, personally, a little further ahead on their action steps and planning for next year, but I will share some of what our data tells us and what I would view as action steps. But I don't work in isolation without my leadership team to decide some of those next steps. We want to start with goal one. We're looking also at our DIBLs and LECTORA data. So we have an additional data point, and that is our Spanish data. And then also diving into I Ready data for mathematics. So same as all elementaries under goal one, we have the same goal set. We have three data points, the elementary. We have our beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. So on the right side, you would see we have set an eighty percent goal, K5 for reading, that eighty percent of our students would be at benchmark. And why we always set an eighty percent goal is because we want to right-size our triangle. And so in the MTSS world, we always talk, talk about making sure that if we have too many kids in the top needing intensive interventions, then something's not working at the bottom. So at the beginning of the year, thirty-two percent of our students at kindergarten at benchmark. But I'm going to do a little twist here because there's an interesting thing going on right now throughout our district in its end-of-year benchmarking. So I'm going to share some of our end-of-year benchmarks. This was submitted before our end-of-year benchmarking. So kindergarten, thirty-two percent of our students meeting proficiency end of year. With still five students to evaluate, we have eighty-four percent of our students at benchmark at kindergarten. We are anticipating being high eighties this year. And there's nothing greater than a kindergarten teacher come running to your office saying, Travis, did you look at my data? And I'm like, I saw it this morning. And they're like, can you believe it? And then the conversation around, I still have one student that's showing up in the red. What are we going to do over the next two weeks or next three weeks? Those are the cool conversations. First grade, you know, mid-year, seeing a negative growth from a fifty-nine to a fifty-eight. Boom. My principal and staff, hard graft. End of year, four students left to assess, seventy-eight percent of our students in first grade at benchmark. Nothing greater than first grade team this morning in my office and celebrating and cheering. Second grade, beginning of the year, forty-nine percent of our students at benchmark. And as of right now, with just a handful of students, we're right, right around seventy percent of our students rule end of year at benchmark. Goal is eighty, so now the plan is, starting day one next year, those students not at benchmark, how do we start our system? Not waiting a month into the school year, starting day one, continuing, moving our kids' learning forward. So that's always great. And seeing the celebrations of how system's working. We have similar systems to Pearson. We always, I always say, we have the Vinland way. Put our twist on how things work around supports and interventions at our school. Next slide. So along with, we've implemented CKLA. We've had our DIBLs assessments going on. We've also implemented a new Spanish language arts curriculum at Vinland this year. That's called Caminos. Our benchmarking system is called LECTORA. And to measure, just like DIBLs does, our students' Spanish foundational skills, do they have the basic foundational skills in Spanish to be fluid readers in Spanish? So some of our data points, we don't have our end-of-year data. The benchmarking for our LECTORA starts on Monday of next week. The goal is always sixty-five percent. I want that goal at eighty percent here in the next two years, showing how our students, English first language and Spanish first language, take this assessment, determining our language foundationally in Spanish. So fifty-eight percent of our kindergartners at benchmark noticed that there was a massive drop. We had lots of questions about this going back into our systems. And what we think we had was a, being a first time of administering this assessment, was a test of regularity. And it makes sense as we fix, you know, fix the system as we go through. We'll see how end-of-year benchmarking does. We have one staff member that does the benchmarking for all one hundred and ten students who participate in our dual-language program at Vinland. First grade, sixty-five percent, once again, being the goal. Beginning of the year, we had fifty to a fifty-two, a plus-two. And then second grade, forty-two, a fifty-two, with a plus-two gain from beginning year, end of year with LECTORA, our students in the DL program, K5. At Vinland this year, we do have a four-five split dual-language, which was very interesting. It's part of the problem from the pandemic. Students transitioned out of dual-language, went back to their home school during that time. So we had a decrease in enrollment for that program. But it is up and healthy and vibrant and very competitive to get into our program.
But Travis, just, so in second grade winter, if I total up those kids, you have twenty-one of them are Spanish students?
No, it's all kids.
Oh, everybody in that program is not just Spanish?
English first language, Spanish first language, take this assessment. That way, we can determine our students. So this would be telling us, are students whose English is their first language, are they developing those skills?
Oh, okay.
Those basic foundational skills also.
Oh, okay.
I would love to see us in the future develop and add on a language assessment to go along with this. This is just measuring the foundations of reading. And then you have assessments that really tell us how strong they are in the reading language, speaking, listening of Spanish.
Okay, so this doesn't tell us that they can read in Spanish, but they can't read in English?
No, no, this is Spanish-only, the foundations of reading in Spanish for both languages, first languages. Math, Vinland historically always has really been strong in math. I am a huge advocate for I Ready. It's a, seems to be a pretty strong program for it. It's a very conceptualized mathematics program. Kindergarten, beginning years, you know, probably set our goal a little low on the younger grades. Thirty-one percent of our students at benchmark. By mid-year, seventy-six percent of our students were at benchmark. First grade, nineteen to forty with a twenty-one percent gain. And then second grade, a fourteen to thirty-eight. We'll be doing our end-of-year benchmarking here next week and the week after. But just some thoughts and ideas. Our systems, I'm thrilled with our systems. Our staff bought into our reading system, K5. We're still developing, you know, Craig talked a little bit about developing their math system. We don't call it a win system. We call it a pup system, and it's power up. And we have a tiered support where all teachers become pup teachers during a certain time of the day, where we do intervention to enrichment. So for thirty minutes reading and math, K5, students go to a targeted system of support. We're looking at defining that even more for math. We have a very strong reading system. This is just kind of already what I told you, kind of where we are. Eighty percent is always our goal and hoping to increase that as the years go on. Similar goal, under goal one, the things that we're working on, you know, is continue developing our foundational skills. We really want strong foundational skills taught, taught K2. We have a really strong CKLA curriculum, Amplify, that does that. We want to increase really our differentiation. How do we provide targeted support? Any student not at benchmark has what's called a PDSA by the New Study Act, attached to them on how we're going to support that student. And we progress, monitor students every two weeks, make sure what systems we put into place, if they're being effective. If they're not, then how are we adapting, changing, modifying? This is number goal, continue to use our data. We have what's called our Vinland MTSS blueprint. That blueprint is our North Star for Vinland. It is everything that we do in our school and the interventions and supports that we put in place. Goal number two is all around student, staff, and family climate, culture data, attendance, and our well-being data. Still focus on the whole child's empowerment, resiliency, and putting supports in place around social, emotional. This is really thinking about the whole student, not just focusing on the academic. What do we need to do to make sure we have supports in place for all kids? We do and continue to have a pretty strong school climate, both from students, families, and staff at Vinland. When we talk about school climate with our students, fifty-one percent of our students, our target focus this year is all around belonging. And so as a staff, we talked to the leadership team earlier this year, how do we increase students' feeling of belonging? And what does that really look like? Especially at elementary where there's limited after-school events. There's, you know, we're tracked really close to grade levels. Your kindergarten's together, first grade's together. So one of our ways of addressing and increasing, hopefully, our scores went down, students feeling connected to Vinland was after-school and before-school clubs. So this year, we did quite a bit of fundraising to be able to increase the amount of after-school and before-school clubs. We have a ton of students that are involved in stuff, athletics, after-school dance. We also have many students that don't and are not involved. So how can we target them and remove? Fortunately, there's barriers. Transportation's always a barrier to access. But how can we provide things for them also? So some of the clubs that we've implemented this year, you know, we have a three-five green team, K5 robotics. Our number one goal is coming after Pearson with robotics and the robotics competition next year. And they've already started this year, and you know, we're, that's, that's number one. We're pretty competitive in, and I try to keep that on the downside a little bit.
We have the flag. Yeah, you have the flag. We're coming for the flag, I should say. I, I should say that, but I am. We, one of the biggest clubs this year was our before-school choir club. We had ninety students weekly come and do choir, and they did a huge performance, which was really cool. We had a three-five leadership club. Kids came in the morning just learning around leadership skills and what does that look like? And then preparing them for middle school. What are leadership opportunities for you to participate in middle school? K2 arts, huge club, three-five play. Kids love play. They wanted to be part of the play, so we added additional play clubs. So those are some of the events that we had, or clubs that we had to address belonging. Our families are connected to Vinland. We have an amazing family community. If we ask, our families come, it is, it's amazing, and they support our school. And probably our big area of support and our area to address is around families in their response to instructional technology, which I think might be addressed with some changes with K1 Chromebooks this next year. I want to jump back up one, Craig, to give a huge, because Dr. Prince is here. Dr. Prince was also a principal intern at Vinland this year with me, who also spearheaded the Vinland Diversity Day. And so this just happened last week, or the last week, oh, yeah, where we, during the school day, celebrated diversity, diversity of all kinds, not just race, not just religion, all types of family structures. We also, we're kids towards the building and did activities and crafts from different cultures, backgrounds. Then we had the after-school events that Dr. Prince spearheaded. All around activities around diversity and looking, you know, our, our theme was, we all belong here. But we also had an underlying theme was, we all eat rice. We know that every culture in the world eats rice of some sort. And so we had rice dinner from five different cultural rices from, that we had at school. And the kids, it was interesting, the kids loved it. But it was, it was a fun event, connecting to belonging and making sure that all of our families still belonged at belonging at school, yeah. Attendance, attendance is always an interesting time, ninety-one point four eight. You know, we, we talked about why the attendance goal is always around ninety-three, ninety-four percent. And it's one of those, you know, post-pandemic, but businesses still in elementary schools. You know, we, we preach, if you're sick, stay home. I mean, right now, we have the sore throat, what do you call it?
Strep.
Strep throat is hitting us in the pink eye. Wash your hands. So we're always addressing. One of our already identified initiatives for next year is increasing our attendance initiatives and how do we support kids and making sure that they get to school. And that, you know, we have a large number of our community members that leave for a month and a half every year. That is community, a lot of them go back to Mexico, and it can't be punitive when we're celebrating our culture. And so that also impacts our attendance. And what a great opportunity for that group of students that are able to do that. School climate, staff, our staff feels connected to our school. Probably the area also, and I don't know why I didn't put it on here, is instructional technology is one of our areas to address over this next year. Making sure that we have the tools, resources, and know how to use our instructional technology, our technology as an instructional tool. Grade three through five, some of our data reporting out. Our two major areas of focus for this next year, highlighting self-efficacy and emotional regulation. So one of our action plans moving forward will be to address those two areas and creating our school improvement plan this next year. The right side is our K5 teacher reported. This is student reported, this is our three-two-five students reporting how they feel about school or Vinland. On the right side is our three-through, our K through five teacher reported. Goal is always, once again, to right side of the triangle. Seventy-four percent of our students, our students are at benchmark where they need to be. So how do we put systems in place to support all students? We have a data team at least once a week, and we look at every piece of data. This is beyond our leadership team and creating action plans and then taking some of that to our leadership team on what do we do next to address this or some of these. I just talked about all this. Repeat.
I don't like talking, I have to talk about it all at once.
You're doing great.
Okay. One of our big things this year is, you know, Ruler. We, we were a Ruler building last year, but we're really a Ruler building this year. Had our twist on it, when we moved the twist this year and really focused in on the tools and anchors of Ruler, K five. Had a huge, our school counselors really, she went to a training this summer with Mr. Frick and some of his staff back east. And we bought in for the most part of Ruler and the tools and around social, emotional learning. We still have pulling some behind us, but that's okay, that's, that's the work. Then our attendance, these are our goals, ninety-four, and that's our goal for next year, ninety-four percent of our students regularly participating in school. This is Ruler, that's the anchor and the tools of Ruler, the Meta Moments Charter, the Blueprint and, I don't know if there, there's one more tool later. So actions, continue to reboot, continue to use our Panorama data, we look at our Panorama data frequently. Our teachers really diving into Panorama. All of our data now is stored in one place. Teachers don't have to go to DIBL to pull data, they don't have to go to iReady to pull data, they can go into Panorama and all of the information they need is right there around every individual student. And so just making sure teachers are well-versed in navigating the Panorama platform. Then once again, continuing to strengthen our MTSS system, focusing on SWIFT, our behavior and our SBA data.
Travis, I don't know that everyone knows what Ruler is.
Ruler?
I mean, I, I don't, I just, I think that's kind of an acronym that we don't know, but you might want to just explain real.
You don't want me to tell you what an acronym is?
We don't mean a twelve years.
Um, Ruler is a framework and it's also a curriculum for social, emotional learning, providing our students an opportunity to become emotionally intelligent humans. So the goal is all around teaching what emotions are and how to respond to emotions. And then if I'm having big emotions, how do I respond to the big emotion through, what does my best self look like and how do I then take a mindful moment to respond to that? So it's a curriculum and that, you know, we used to have second steps. It's our new in the last couple of years, social, emotional learning curriculum. Goal three, I'm looking at the clock, Rachel hasn't kicked me in, so I'll move fast here.
You're doing great.
Okay. Same as Mr. Frick, we're going to look at DIBL, Lektor, math and some SBA. Same goal under three items. We do not have any updated reading. This is our DIBL score from beginning of year to mid-year, from a third grade fifty-one to a sixty. I'm a gambling individual, we're going to be somewhere up into the mid-eighties, eighty percent here. Right now, eighty-two, fifty, eighty is our goal, fifty-seven to seventy-one is where we were from beginning of the year to mid-year and a forty-seven to fifty-nine. Looking at our Lektor, this is for all students in the dual-language program, take Lektor. Once again, you see that we had a test of regularity of sorts maybe, third grade drops from a fifty-three to a forty-two percent. We had zero growth between the two and, and zero proficiency with our handful of fourth graders with this assessment and then a twenty-three to a forty-five with fifth graders. Math data, sixty-seven percent mid-year we're at benchmark, sixty-two percent mid-year, fourth grade, sixty-five, fifth grade. No, let me back up, that's not accurate. Three, three, four, five already did their benchmark assessment. This is our end results. So from the beginning of the year to our end of year results, we took our benchmarks for iReady in April. We had a forty-three percent gain from the three benchmarks from beginning to end. Our goal is seventy percent. Fourth grade, we went from a twenty-three to a sixty-two, that is our end of year result, even though we still had two months of learning after that end of year benchmark with that. And then seventh, our fifth grade went from a thirty-eight percent to a sixty-five with a twenty-five percentage grade gain. Continue to refining systems, iReady still implementing that curriculum with fidelity or intention and continuing to developing our pup systems. Our DIBLs and our SBA data, smarter balance assessment, we are in the middle of smarter balance. We finished up ELA this week, we're moving into math next week. Once again, continuing to put supports in place, we want to see eighty percent of our students plus at benchmarks for SBA. That is the sum of it, that tells us really how effective our systems are. Our, our data, we'll share more of this out, but continue to grow our systems. So we would hope to see that iReady is a indicator for SBA. So if third grade is at sixty-seven percent in April, I would hope to see that third grade based off of SBA would see be somewhere in the mid-seventies if it's a true indicator of how students will perform from iReady to this data assessment.
Have you found that to be true?
Yeah. It's pretty close. You can do a pretty good correlation between iReady and each. It goes up and down on the reliability between the two, but it's a couple off and that's about it.
That's good.
It's pretty close. Gwen probably can tell you how close it really is, but it's, it's pretty accurate.
Good.
So once again, we need to continue to focus on SLA. It's the first year of a new SLA curriculum adoption and assessment. We need to continue to focus on math and growing that system throughout K five, three-five. That's Vinland, that's picture last year on the right, that's part of our Diversity Days celebrating each color's a grade level. That kid went faster at the end. Thanks for kicking me, Rachel.
All right.
Questions?
Okay. So first, thank you, excellent presentation. I, one, just want to make a comment, I mean, the, the growth in math, that's, that's great, that's some significant growth, so looking forward to that continuing next year there. And then also, I really appreciate your focus on clubs. I, I truly believe in that sense of belonging, I mean, that's rise of attendance, that's rise of learning, but I think it's really important, I think it's something that, you know, we, we used to do very well at, you know, pre, pre-pandemic and it's good to see those kind of getting back up there. So the important thing is thank your staff, I mean, clubs don't happen without a staff member, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate the, the time that they're taking to do that, I think that's very, very important.
Yeah. Staff member and their passion, but also their passion has to wind with the kids' passion, that's always the challenge.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, any other questions?
I interrupted and asked my questions.
No problem. Nope, it's same interaction.
Thank you, it's a good presentation.
Yes, no, I'll just second what Mike said, great presentation and I also really appreciate the focus on kind of that belonging and thinking outside the box for all the kids. Because as we know, you know, there's all different opportunities and not all kids get the same opportunities, so finding ways for them to be connected, because I think that really makes a big difference, so thank you and thank, please thank your staff.
Likewise, if I'm new to this and learning new programs, I'm impressed with your statistical layout and how you, how you qualify. It allows you to set goals and targets and you have a really good vision of where you're at and, and I'm impressed with that.
Can I have one last statement?
Yeah, please.
You know what, I have to do this, we have had a phenomenal PTSA, that's part of our PTSA also. Irene Moyer and Lisa Nichols are resigning, are retiring, I guess, from our PTSA, so I want to publicly do a shout-out, they've been on that board for many years, and just put that shout-out to them, they've done a lot for our school. If you're on there, I'm sure, thank you too.
Yep, thank you. Again, thank you Principal Frick, Principal Smith, excellent presentation and thank you to staff members who were able to attend this evening and just look forward to continuing to create things at both schools. Thank you. All right, the next agenda item is public comments. The North Kitsap School Board of Directors welcomes the public to this open public meeting. In accordance with board policy and state law, board meetings must be conducted in a civil, orderly and businesslike manner, which means we must all follow the same standards of stability during school board meetings. We value public comments. If you would like to speak to potential items on the agenda, you may sign up to speak using the sign-up sheets that are included on the meeting agenda and on the school district's website. Both, both virtual and in-person attendees may sign up for public comment. The board sets aside a maximum of two thirty-minute public comment periods per meeting. Speakers wishing to comment on agenda items will be prioritized in the first public comment period, allowing for the board to hear comments prior to board action or consideration. Individual speakers will have three minutes for their comments. Speakers may not donate some or all of their time to another speaker and the person who signed up to comment should be the same person who addresses the board. No speaker may speak more than once per meeting, even if there is time remaining. The board will not respond to statements, questions or challenges made during the public comment period. The board may ask district staff to contact a speaker at a later time to follow up on issues raised during the public comment period. When it's your turn to speak, please approach the podium if you are in person. If you're commenting via Zoom, you'll be promoted to panelist on Zoom. You must then turn on your video microphone to make public comment. Finally, please remember that your words have impact. We value our community's feedback and we welcome your comments. Thank you. We have five speakers this evening, all are in person. The first speaker is Kevin Hogan, if he could approach the podium, please.
Thank the school board. I've never spoken in front of the board, but I appreciate all your efforts and what you do. I know it's all volunteer and it's a lot of hard work. So I do like what the principal said, you know, they use words like collaborative, teamwork, involvement of all hands, phenomenal PTAs. And I just wanted to address, you know, I'm involved in North Kitsap pretty heavy, I'm involved in a lot of things, I know a lot of people, I know a lot of things going on and I would just like to bring up and talk about, there's an athletic director position that's being filled and changed and it's really taken me and a lot of people by surprise. And all I want to do is, it's not about who's who or whether, I think all individuals that have been interviewed and that are up for this position are good honorable people, but there's been processes in the past here that have not gone very well. We're dealing with one right now with a leader. And it seems that the decision that to make this new athletic director, and what I'm seeing on this is that it's now an administrator position, it's not a teacher doing another job, it's an administrator. And there's been no public, you know, I'm in the boosters as a volunteer and others and it just seems like there hasn't been this outpouring or this, you know, hey, come meet the new candidates, come talk to them, come see it. Come talk to this person and see how it is. There's, you know, I know the school is looking for somebody that's got the personality, the skills, the attributes and experience to do this job. Well, it seems like we have one already. Now somebody else is coming in. The question we, I have is why? And was the process done fairly with public support, public questions, teacher input, booster input? I mean, these are the people that helped make a school district great, where, you know, the board works for us, right? And that's how it's supposed to work and we, we'd like the input of, this is a big job and administrators like a principal or a superintendent almost, it's going to affect a lot of people and I feel that the process just wasn't done. And all I'm asking is that you consider putting this decision on hold until a more context is given to the public and there's a more transparent process because, you know, this was not a transparent process. I can tell you that and, and I would really like to know from the board, and I know you can't answer, is there was a committee to hire this person, did the committee make a recommendation and then that recommendation not followed? So I guess I'm out of time, but I would just like the board to consider that before this rubber stamp decision gets done tonight, to at least maybe peel back and reevaluate how that process was done for this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ellen Doherty.
Thank you, Superintendent Davenport, School Board President Desmond, School Board members and distinguished guests. I'm here to speak for An Tran. An served as the Athletic Director for Paulson Middle School for two years. At that time, I was head coach for the cross-country and girls' track teams. During those two years, he did more than any athletic director prior and, I imagine, after his tenure. An embodied Panther pride and he was able to develop pride in our athletes by a public display for league trophies, poster-sized team banners displaying in the main entrance, banners hung in the gym honoring the league schools that we played against, banners recognizing the kids who were four, three and two sport athletes. Two of those athletes, I've had the privilege of keeping in contact with over the years. One young woman, a recognized middle school four-sport athlete, ASB president and honor roll student, is now on her masters at Villanova. She currently ranks third in the Women's Big East Hammer Throw and no doubt the Olympics are in sight. Another young woman, a recognized middle school three sport athlete, leadership member, honor roll student, was the only female athlete to graduate with honors from Boise State this year. As a sprinter and relay team member, she's continuing at Boise for her masters, will still run for the Broncos and will continue to break her PRs. You're probably wondering, did their name on a banner in a middle school have anything to do with collegiate accomplishments? Good question. I'm sure as a female eighth-grade student, it could have had a positive effect. I envision a female sixth grader looking at that banner and saying, I can do that. The young woman that I previously mentioned, her name on that banner had a big impression on her. She felt more valued as a middle school athlete than she did in high school. As a side note, her senior year, she ranked fifth in the United States for the Hammer Throw, a sport that's not currently recognized by North Kitsap. An as a teacher, a cheerleader, a motivator and an inspiration. I witnessed that when he led the celebration for the ladies Viking volleyball team as they boarded the bus to state last November. I seriously do not recall this ever happening to any of our female athletes. As I understand, the position switched from salary to hourly, which was, I just was now corrected, but a full, as a coach, I worked closely with the AD.
I'm sorry, your time is expired.
Okay. But my main point is, is you kick aside a man who not only got the job done, he established a culture and enthusiasm for our young athletes that is unparalleled and unprecedented. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeannie Elton.
Good evening, my name is Jeannie Elton, I'm a citizen and community member. I also have a son who's a high school senior. My son Alexander wanted to be here tonight, however, he had a baseball game, which I encouraged him to not miss. I'm speaking on behalf of him and our family. Some people think that high school athletics are not important, but high school sports were everything to, my, my son, I'm sorry, it's an emotional time of year. Sports gave him agency and community and a reason to go to school. I see a number of people in this room that know my son and all the difficulties that he's had in his education, coaching, coaches over the last few years and Mr. Tran since middle school has played an integral part in his success. They're the reason why he's getting to the graduation stage in a few weeks. Mr. Tran was and continues to be a positive force for, for parents. I've seen him at sporting events all year long, including after the fact that he realized that he would likely be losing this position. I saw him on Saturdays at baseball games, multiple, multiple football games this year. He has been such a positive force for the athletics program, the coaches, the parents, the athletes, all of them. Because of the many successes and support at the North Kitsap High School in regards to sports, most student athletes probably think that it was a great year, but there were many disappointments this year that have were many disappointments this year that the students have had to deal with, but maybe aren't really thinking about. The failure of the school bond was an absolute disappointment. I can speak for myself when I say that my son is playing on the same baseball field that his grandparents played on in the 1970s. That's an embarrassment, and it's also dangerous. A number of families in this community were counting on the school bond for many, many reasons, and the mismanagement of that school bond was an absolute disappointment to so many people in this community. The girls' softball field's a disaster. Kingston High School's baseball field is worse than North's. Things got to be fixed around here. The vote of no confidence really had parents concerned. The situation with the superintendent this year. There's been a lot of controversy and upset at the highest echelons of this organization. I work for a high-level organization where there are many people, and if it's not working at the top, it's not going to work at the bottom. You guys have to fix a number of things. Lastly on this, I want to tell you that it really pains me to see how sad my son was for him to witness for the first time in his life, the disappointment of learning that unfair things happen to people who are doing a good job. He learned a big lesson about the real world. He has a bitter taste in his mouth about this, and he's very sad for Mr. Tran. He wanted me to voice his concern and upset as a citizen and student-athlete in support of Mr. Tran. You guys need to do better on certain things in this organization, and I'd like you to reconsider the decision to remove Mr. Tran as the AD. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Mindy Belheba Rivera.
Can you hear me? Can y'all hear me? Disclaimer, my intention with speaking today is not to reduce the reputation of any community member. I am simply seeking transparency and truth. I ask that you pause the vote on the personnel recommendation for the athletic director hire today so that the hiring and interview process of NKHS and PMS can be properly investigated. I have concerns that affinity bias, implicit bias, and/or personal relationships outside of work may have figured into the decision not to hire Mr. An Tran, and that it wasn't a fair, equitable, or transparent hiring and interview process. I have concerns because I believe he was employed as a placeholder until the position was reclassified and the salary increased. Whereas on-the-job training would have been provided for this position due to its complexity, he and his predecessor were not provided this. And despite claims that he wasn't qualified, that is untrue. He is investigated. You should pause the AD vote and investigate the reasons why Kingston High School and Kingston Middle School conducted their hiring process substantially different from NKHS's and PMS's. You should pause the AD vote to investigate why NKSC, under interim Superintendent Davenport, does not have one standard operating procedure for hiring employees? Why, as stewards of the school district, are you content with randomness in its employment procedures? What is so wrong with expressly articulating fair, equitable, predictable, legal operation standards and sharing them with the community? It is true, you should pat yourselves on the back for the improvements you as a board have made since the other superintendent was placed on paid leave, but more work is required via the Bainbridge Island model. Principals serving on the hiring committee in Kingston... Sorry. I thought that was a dependent clause. Principals served on the hiring committee in Kingston, but as far as I know, rational stakeholders like the NK and PMS principals, as well as NKAA leaders and the district athletic director himself, were gerrymandered off the hiring committee. I do not believe it can be seriously argued that the principals who were left off felt such personal affection for Mr. Tran that they recused themselves. That doesn't feel correct. Yet, personal outside-of-work relationships did allegedly exist among players around the AD hiring process. What would have looked like if Mr. Tran had stronger relationships with those in the hiring committee and other decision-makers because they showed their lies outside of work? Would he have gotten the job? We will never know because he was not asked. In light of claims that Mr. Tran did not interview well, as well as with any alleged close connections between interviewer, interviewee, please ask this interim superintendent to verify that explicit stuff we're taking to ensure that subjective feelings of friendship and any conflicts of interest did not figure into the interview and hiring process, and that a fair, equitable, transparent process actually transpired. This is imperative. Investigate. Finally, you must investigate the retaliatory culture. I hear that anyone who dared to support Mr. Tran publicly will be a target. Please don't approve the personal recommendations. Please restart the hiring process for the position. Thank you, and submitting my comments.
All right, thank you. The final speaker for this evening is Lisa McDonald.
Good evening, board members, administration, faculty, students, and community members. I'm reading my typed statement to ensure I can get out as much information as possible in the three minutes allotted to me, and I apologize, I'm changing gears on you all over here. I signed up to speak tonight to ask that our school district make changes to the existing technology policies. I know not every family has the same concerns that I do, and I'm glad to know that those families have had a positive experience with the school-issued technology. On the other hand, I've spoken with enough other families to know that there is a large number that do have concerns. I come to you as a parent that has experienced some of my own kids in the school district using the school-issued computer for distractions during class, such as gaming and watching YouTube videos. I have met with teachers, principals, the IT directors, guidance counselors, and other student support team members to ask about better restrictions and monitoring tools, as well as book and paper curriculum options. Prior to the pandemic, we were often told as parents to limit screen time, to monitor the youth, to find activities that did not involve screens. Research on the topic, my own experience, and my conversations with other parents and school staff shows that too much technology use has a negative impact on social and emotional growth, mental health, physical health, and sleep patterns, to name a few. Paraphrasing what one mental health professional recently shared with me, brain addiction is a mental health issue for all of us. It is isolating us from relationships with our family, our friends, and communities, as well as contributes to poor sleep and obesity. Screen time increases ADHD. Another community member that works with youth shared, addictive pathways are being created in the brain for all children. We already have enough historical trauma without adding this. Our kids need real-life, hands-on, critical-thinking experiences. There is not enough time here tonight to repeat all that was shared with me regarding this topic. I will say that I was alarmed to learn in one of my meetings with school staff that the Securely app is not even able to track all activity on the school-issued technology. Kids are smart, and they have found ways around the school's chosen method of monitoring and restrictions. We need to do better for our families. We need a safer and healthier technology space for them. We need more hands-on learning. Honorable board members, do not consider only what I'm sharing with you tonight. I am asking you, before the end of this school year, survey your students, parents, and faculty. Ask them what the impact our current district technology use has had on them. Ask them for their solutions. Share the results with the community. Did you learn that most families and staff like the technology policy and practice the way that it is now? Or would they like to see change? I urge you to engage in this conversation and take the lead in implementing the necessary change.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comments for the evening. The next item is board comments. Does any board member have a comment they would like to share with the rest of the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Go ahead. One of the things I wanted to share was Ted Jezz, who is the NK president, and his team gave us a list of statements that characteristics of impactful leaders, and I think this is going to be really helpful as we move forward, and I appreciate their input. Also, I'd like to thank Mike and his team that helped with the audit. The audit was a 37-page report, and I didn't understand all of it, but I got the gist of it. They saved us $11,000 because according to the audit, our district staff was well-organized and responsive to audit requests. And we had no noncompliant issues, and they looked at impact aid and how money is spent, child nutrition, and how the COVID-19 funds were spent. And I also want to thank, Bree and I went to the civics class at Kingston High School, and we really appreciated the interest the kids had in public and improving our schools. And last night, I got to go to the Kingston Seniors Scholarship Awards, and I was so impressed how many kids were getting scholarships at Kingston. It was really a well-designed and produced presentation.
Thank you.
I'll just take a moment again to publicly welcome you. Head word to the board, we really appreciate, again, your time and dedication.
Thank you. And I think it's worth mentioning a second time again, I was able to attend the exit conference for our recent audit, and just congratulations to Mike and to Renata to come out of an audit like that with the extent that they were looking at with no significant findings, and even the audit team said that it is very, very rare. For the most part, it doesn't really happen. So again, just appreciate their hard work, and yeah, just excellent job there. And then, yeah, I think that was all my comments.
Of course, welcome.
Thank you. Okay. So, board reports, does any board member have a report to share in regard to their assigned liaison position?
I'll just share, KCAC, we had our May meeting on the 8th of this month, and the conversation was still very much around transportation and the transportation improvement project. So, the committee did vote to submit two projects to Kitsap Public Works. But again, this is just something, for anyone on the north end, I think this is to pay attention, as we know, with the ferry traffic and roads around our schools and lack of kind of infrastructure still sidewalks, that this is something we want to watch closely, and hopefully we'll see some improvements coming down the road.
And I went to the city council meeting, and I just thought the public would like to know that there was a presentation by Clay Roberts, who is suggesting that we convert the OfficeMax building to six indoor pickleball courts with a food court and pickleball courts in that big, huge parking lot. So I thought that would be a really interesting thing to follow, to see if it happens.
Okay, got it. And then for WIA, it's that time of the year where they typically receive and vote on amendments. Twenty-seven proposals this time around, 14 of them passed, nothing significant to the school district, so I went through and looked at those. And then also, I just wanted to back up real quick. You'll see in the agenda, we have the Saquamish and Fort Gamble government-to-government responses. I want to again thank them for hosting us and for the engagement and great conversations. I look forward to those meetings continuing, the continued progress with them. Okay, any other board reports? Okay. The superintendent report, Rachel, would you please provide your comments to the board?
Yes. We have two seniors here that are getting ready to graduate coming up here in two weeks. So this will be, it doesn't have to be your last meeting, you're more than welcome to come back. Just usually after graduation, people leave. So if this is your last meeting, thank you for being here, and the last few meetings that I've been here, having really valued discussion points and added to our conversation. So, thank you both, and congratulations. To put it on everybody's radar, we have our graduations coming up. North Kitsap High School on the 7th, Kingston High School on the 8th. We also have our Native American honoring graduation this year, and it's going to be on the fourth, followed by our CTE awards night. We had our WASA awards dinner. It's been a long time since we've had a meeting. So back on April 29th, we had our WASA awards dinner where we honored one of our employees here, Julia Weston. Her work along with our Pouso Sons of Norway, they had winter care packages for our students. They were honored. They provided winter clothing, personal hygiene items, and we really appreciate the community support in organizing that. Tuesday night, I was able to attend, I know we recognize our seniors here tonight with their honor course, but I was able to attend the seal of biliteracy, and it's really incredible watching the students that earned anywhere between one credit and four credits, being able to be bilingual and speak multiple languages. I believe we had one student that was honored last year, I believe it was French, and this year it was Japanese, so he speaks three languages. So, very, very talented linguistic students Tuesday night. Today, we had conflicting events. I was part of an anatomatage table demonstration at North Kitsap High School. It's a table that's going to be introduced at Kingston High School as well. It works with 3D rendering of both human bodies, as well as with our FAA and animal agriculture curriculum. At the same time, we were having Teacher of the Year from our school foundation honored at Wolfley Elementary. Tim Wilkinson was honored from our North Kitsap School Foundation. Make sure I'm not forgetting anything. I visited Kingston High School last week, the Native American Club, where I got to watch our students making their cedar woven hats, and I was offered an opportunity to try, and I told the young man that I would mess it up for him, and I didn't want him to be walking on stage with cedar being off kilt. So I really appreciate the work that Chrissy did with the Native American Club at Kingston High School. Sorry for the long report.
Great update, thank you. Okay, student representatives, would you please provide your comments to the board?
Sure. Like Bev mentioned, we had our scholarship award last night for the seniors, and it was so great. It was nice to see all the students and their families celebrating the seniors' achievements, and it's a really great feeling to have the ceremony celebrating all your hard work paying off. This morning, we had an exciting send-off for our softball team heading to state, and their first game is tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. Next Thursday, our senior class is going to the federal courthouse in Seattle, and I think we're looking forward to seeing how the judicial system works up close, and I want to thank the Saquamish Tribe and the Civic Learning Council for funding the trip. And finally, as the school year is winding down, staying focused on schoolwork is very tough for everyone, I think. It's like the usual end-of-year vibe where everyone is excited for summer, but I think we're all trying to power through our finals and state testing and...
I guess as a Vinland Elementary alumni, I definitely wanted to thank Principal Smith for presenting at today's meeting, and I love that Vinland's continuing to grow future leaders at such an early age. Kind of similar to Kingston, North Kitsap has a next busy couple of weeks, especially for seniors. And then we also have many teams and individuals who are going to be going to state championships, so congratulations to them. On the 28th, seniors will be visiting their elementary schools for the elementary grad walks, and then there is also a performance of "You're Driving Me Crazy," which is going to be put on by the Drama Club on the 28th as well. There is a summer band concert Wednesday, the 29th, and choir actually just had their last concert yesterday. The senior awards and scholarship night, I know Kingston already had theirs, but ours is on May 30th, and that'll be at 6:30 p.m. in the Commons. And then the engineering students have been working on building ROVs, and they will be testing those in the pool early Friday morning. And then lastly, the NK Booster Club is holding the senior breakfast on Friday, May 31st, at 7:00 a.m. in the Commons. And different from in the past this year, all seniors who have participated in any athletics at NK are invited, regardless of whether or not they'll be moving forward at the collegiate level. So I think that's cool that they're shifting towards that. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the board and my school and my principal for entrusting me in holding the role as a student board representative, and I appreciate the integration of student comment and perspective at school meetings, and hope to see this continue in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great comment.
Mike, I have one more shout-out. Just an example of the seniors' scholarship. There was a young man named Noah, and he received the NK Alumni Scholarship, the Paulsville Lions Club Scholarship, the Greater Kingston Kiwanis Foundation Scholarship, the Kingston North Kitsap Rotary Scholarship, the President's Award for Educational Excellence... Kipsett Rotary Scholarship, the President's Award for Educational Excellence, the Olympic League Scholar Athlete Swimming, and an honored graduate. Thank you, Noah.
Well, and I happen to know Laurie was honored for the Honor Society at North Kipsett High School, I happen to be at that, so congratulations to that too, again, two wonderful students, great examples. Thank you. Okay. All right, next item is Consent Agenda, items 8.1.1 through 8.1.10, a motion is needed to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Okay, thank you, Beth. We need a second for the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Brianne. A motion has been made and seconded, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And I am a yes also. All opposed to the motion? None? The motion passes with a vote of four, four and zero against. Thank you. The next item for Board Action is the Ivoxy Purchase Order, a motion is needed to discuss the purchase order, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, Brianne. We need a second, do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, so the motion is to approve the Ivoxy Purchase Order, motion has been made and seconded, do we have any new comments for discussion? Okay, if there's no more discussion, I put the question to vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, I heard three yeses, I am a yes, all opposed to the motion? None? Motion passes with a vote of four, four and zero against. Next item is, a motion is needed to discuss the 2024, 2025 and 2005, excuse me, 25, 2026 school calendar revisions, do I have a motion?
I move that we accept.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Do we need a second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Brianne. So the motion is to approve the 2024, 2025 and the 2025, 2026 school calendar revisions. Motion has been made and seconded, do we have any new comments for discussion?
I have a comment.
Yes.
So, I'm really interested in this calendar change because I was a kindergarten teacher for six years and it was the most rewarding and exhausting job I ever had. So I'm so glad that we're going to give the teachers in kindergarten time to meet with their students individually and do some assessment before the first day of school. So now the first day of school for kindergarteners will be September 3rd, which gives the school and the kids some time to adjust before our youngest players arrive. So I think it was an excellent revision on that.
Okay.
What other changes have been made on these agendas as to the current schedule?
That would be our spring break, so the Calendar Committee got together and looked at our other surrounding district's spring break and so the spring break now aligns with both Bainbridge Island School District and CK School District.
What about winter break, are we still aligning with those other districts?
It's a little more off, so CK's winter break is a little bit different. Bainbridge Island has something called a midwinter break, so they have different professional learning days through their collective bargaining agreements than what we have.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I put the question to vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
And I am a yes. And all opposed to the motion? None? The motion passes with a vote of four, four and zero against. Okay, a motion is needed to discuss the Pulsco Middle School 3, which is pool auditorium breaker and GF CI replacement, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, Brianne. And we need a second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Edward. So the motion is to, is for the Pulsco Middle School pool auditorium breaker and GF CI replacement, and the motion has been made and seconded, do we have any new comments for discussion?
Can I just make a comment how great those lifeguards are at the pool? They are wonderful. I go there on Wednesdays and they've always been very helpful and encouraging and.
Okay, well this will keep them safer.
Yes, and this will keep them safer.
Absolutely, okay, any other comments?
Question.
Yes.
Was this a, was this a scheduled maintenance or was this an out-of-sequence, this like an emergency?
It is a safety issue, yeah. This one, it came up and we had been looking at it and this is, we believe it's a safety issue.
So who is, who is the one who identified the?
Yeah, it's our facilities maintenance folks.
Okay. So are you going to be taking all the outlets, all the 120 outlets and what GF?
I could not speak to that, possibly Mike could speak to it, but I would say the person that you'd want to get answers from is Reed Gillig, our facilities and maintenance director.
Right, if there's no more discussion, I put the question to vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes? All opposed to the motion? None? Okay, the motion passes with a vote of four, four and zero against. A motion is needed to discuss the Kingston High School guardrail replacement, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, Brianne, we need a second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Edward. So, motion is to approve the Kingston High School guardrail replace, replacement, motion has been made and seconded, do we have any new comments for discussion?
I would just, you know, again, for Edward, if you can provide, I know this is another safety, I was showing him the picture of the guardrail.
Yes, so this is our back, our back loop where our buses drive and our staffs drive back behind here and when there's sporting events and folks are parking back there, there is, this is a well-used roadway into Kingston High School and behind that guardrail is a, is a drop-off, a little ravine. So this is another one where we believe it's a safety issue.
I still come back to the issue, was this identified in a, in a routine inspection?
Our facilities and maintenance, yes.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, I put the question to vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes? All opposed to the motion? None? The motion passes with a vote of four, four and zero against. Motion is needed to discuss Resolution 050124, Authorization to Employ Non-Supervisory Personnel, do I have a motion?
I move that we.
Okay, thank you, Beth. We need a second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brianne. Most, excuse me, the motion is to approve Resolution 050124, Authorization to Employ Non-Supervisory Personnel, motion has been made and seconded, do we have any new comments for discussion?
Coming in new on this, who are these individuals and are they covered in the bargaining agreement?
They are, so certificated personnel are positions that are covered under our NKEA bargaining agreement, so anybody that's employed with that would be covered under this. We have other non-supervisory personnel, but they are, they get reasonable assurance letters versus contracted through.
Okay, so what are these, what are the job descriptions that these?
Teachers, TOCs, counselors, SLPs, OTs, psychologists.
There's no more discussion, I put the question to vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
And yes? All opposed to the motion? None? The motion passes with a vote of four, four and zero against. The next item is Management Reports, Management Reports will be turned over to Superintendent Davenport and staff to answer any questions the board has regarding the materials provided.
Our first management report is our Budget, Budget Status Report for April, this is our monthly report. If you have questions, Mike Merlino is here and he and I can answer those.
I don't have any questions either, thank you.
Right. The next Management Report, 9.2, is our Clubs and Activity Accounts, it might be a mic show tonight, another Budget Finance Report. If there are questions around this report, we can, those as well.
I don't have any questions, it was, I would just say it was always fun to see the creativity in the clubs and, yeah, just, I love reading over this and seeing kind of all the options for kids to get involved.
Yeah, and I know girls' flag football didn't make it in the WIAA situation this year, but I think that there is a big push and I know that we have a lot of female athletes that are looking forward to WIA's future of recognizing that.
Yeah, I think, I think when it comes a little bit more public and people understand it actually went up for amendment, a bigger push for that, so, which I think would be great.
Our next report, 9.3, our Asset Management Reports, if there are questions around that, this has to do with our, our facilities, if there are other questions, bring Mike up to talk about that.
Just for clarification, you know, we're seeing just, I believe the beginning of the schools, will that continue?
Yes, yes. Mike, this is speaking, Mike, I see you moving.
What was your question?
Just that, you know, as you can see, it's not all of our schools, I think that the assessment is ongoing, so we should see the results for the additional schools here shortly.
Oh, for the, yeah.
So is this a team, Mike, is this the same group that has both staff and public people on the team that's going to build?
The, the SETI architects work with us to do this report, which allows us to maintain eligibility for the school construction program, the SCAP program. So the, the Facilities Committee is separate from this work.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say though, it's important because I think they could then take this information and can kind of guide them towards what will be the next steps for capital funds.
So this, I think it says in the report, any school that is after 1993 isn't, we keep track of, not every school is part of this ICALE report, so there's only certain schools that are eligible for the SCAP fund. But 100% I agree with you, Mike, the facility index work that we do to give us all of the details for all of the various schools as we talk about the projects and the infrastructure projects and even replacement down the line, if there's another bond at some point, it's informed through that project, that process.
And just for, so I was just, SCAP funds are, it's a state match, money based on a formula, so the state would match if we were to refurbish, remodel or rebuild, the state would match up to a certain amount based on this formula.
And Mike, just for clarification, I know it's in here, but it's basically comparing, it compares these schools against like brand new.
Correct, yeah, so what they would do is, they would look at the roofing systems of the age back and compare them to what a, a brand new school would look like and then, so if it's a percentage that was in the 70s, 80s, those, that range, that's where you would expect the building of the age that we have to score, but that's correct, it's comparing these schools, anything after 1993, as if compared to a brand new school.
So to get matching funds, do you have to show that the issue has been verified by a tick committee like this?
See, in order to get matching funds, you have to follow this process, the board has to authorize the report and then you have to have a local match in order to, the local share to generate the, the state match fund.
And that would be in a bond or it could be?
It, I mean, we may have somebody in the community that wants to donate like 30, 40 million dollars, if we can find one of those people, that works as well. Typically, it's a bond or a capital levy.
Okay, thank you.
9.4 is Kingston High School Cross Country Field Trip, it's overnight to Tillamook Organ. If there's any questions, I know Craig Barry, District Athletic Director is here.
No questions.
Cross country is near and dear to my heart, fourth place is a statement, I wish them the best.
Yeah, thank you. Our next, our next management report is our Wolfley Elementary School Gym Edition, so with our Capital Projects Fund, not from our 2022 levy, this is another project that is on it, very similar to what was, what was done and being done at Suquamish Elementary.
So that design has already been approved, right?
It has, so we actually went to the school, met with school principal, the PE teacher, custodian, office manager, went through different options for this gym, they went back out and met with both full staff and PTA group and we got input around that. And I really believe that, I think the biggest one that everybody agreed on there was color scheme chatter and so a new color scheme and it's exciting, so we got a lot of, much better process allowing folks to have input as to what, what we were building.
Can I just ask a?
Sure.
Curious question, so are the, are there skylights in there? Because I've noticed that when the power goes out, the gym's like the place where you can use the glow light.
So the, the, both constructions of both Suquamish Elementary and Wolfley Gym bring in natural light, that's part of new building and facility school construction, is to pull in the natural light and then have color scheme and color palette that will play off it and sound dampening, gosh, not carpets, but fixtures up and around, yes, thank you, Mike knows that is, so yeah, it is, it's a part of it, the lighting is big, trying to make it look natural light, sit in with even landscape.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, I would just say, thank you to the public, you know, we can only complete projects like these with continued investment into capital funds, so just know that we don't take this lightly, there's a lot of thought and process that goes into it through the Facilities Committee and at the district level, it's good to see the continued parent and staff input into these projects, so look forward to this coming online and the students be able to, to enjoy this.
And our last report, glad this was right in front of it, so our last report is our Facilities Advisory Committee Updates, our committee has been meeting, they've had two major meetings, the last meeting was off-site at one of our campuses and we're rotating that, that meeting around to multiple campuses in our district, and I will turn it over to Mike.
So we did, we had our second meeting at Pearson Elementary last Wednesday, we meet about every two weeks right now for two hours and they generally last longer than that. This is our first meeting at an actual site and that's what we plan on doing is meeting at the various sites, so the committee has an opportunity to actually see what the buildings are like. Principal Frick was here earlier, he's a member of the committee, he gave the committee members a tour of the facility, kind of spoke to some of the challenges that we face at Pearson with the school that was built, I think in the 50s, quite some time ago, walked the site, so we spent a little bit of time doing that. One of the, one of the things that we talked about this week was we talked about bonds, financing bonds and financing levies, what you can and can't do with either of those and the, just kind of the timelines around elections, what we would look at. And the purpose really was to kind of just give information because ultimately the committee would likely make a recommendation to you in terms of, okay, what are the next steps? We failed the bond, is it a bond in the future, is it a capital levy in the future, what do we need to do short-term, what do we need to do long-term? And in that conversation, the committee was pretty clear, definitely clear, that their recommendation would be that we would run a capital levy, so not a bond at this time. And I think that the issue around a bond is primarily the work that we need to do that Mike's talking about in terms of, you know, we've got short-term, it's easy to identify a, a large amount of dollars that we need to put into infrastructure for a variety of, of issues, but when you really want to think about a long-term plan, we need to spend a little time to do that work, looking at each site, what is it, you asked some questions about the, what's been identified, what's in the normal maintenance cycle, what is the replacement cycle? That's the work that we have to, there's been a lot of work, that's not that we haven't done work, but I just think. work, but I just think we needed to update that process and come up with a twenty, thirty, forty year plan beyond the short term. So, uh, when talking about the length of time that that would take and the timing of elections, uh, and when collections occur, it was pretty clear that a capital levy was what would be recommended. So, uh, one of the other things we talked about with that was, uh, resolution timing. And the resolution timing, in order to potentially run a capital levy in the fall, is in August, uh, resolution passage, early August, which would mean it would be something the board would need to take up by the end of July, really. So it's why we're doing a lot of the work right now at the committee level. So the, the belief is that that would be the recommendation, but not the specific, is it a one year? Is it a two year? Is it a three year? What are the amounts? That work hasn't really been done yet. Um, beyond talking about that, we've talked a lot about communication, how we're communicating with the, with the public, how we're being transparent, how we're getting the information out. So I would, I would ask you to take some time and look at the district's website. Uh, there have been a lot of updated, uh, pages added to the district's website, uh, under the capital projects page where there's 2018 levy, a lot of the work that's been done, what projects have been completed to 2022, uh, capital levy, what projects are ongoing or in the process of being done. Um, and then also information with respect to the facility advisory committee, meetings, minutes, uh, just what we're doing in those meetings. Separate from the meetings, the Basetti folks, um, are meeting, and they have, at this point, been to every elementary school, and they've given, I think they go out to a school at eleven o'clock and at eleven thirty, they stay till, they stay till five o'clock. So they meet with staff. The community has made aware of it. If they, uh, community members come to the school during the day, and they just take feedback, uh, on, from the perspective of the staff, from the perspective of the community, what are the projects, what are the things that they see. All at the same time, they're doing work with engineers, with experts, doing assessments of our sys- systems that will help inform this facility condition index that, uh, Mike has talked about a few different times. Uh, all the elementary schools, I think, um, are complete. They went to Kingston Middle School today. I think it's Paul'sville Middle. We saw through Paul'sville Middle School, the two high schools, and then this building, the maintenance facility and transportation as well. So a lot of work is ongoing. We meet again next, uh, Wednesday for another two hour meeting. That's at Sequamish. The next meeting is at Sequamish. So over the course of the next several months, we'll get to all of the buildings in the district. Um, and I know that we're coming to the board for a work session or a, a meeting at, at some point in the, before the end of school. There's going to be a, a community meeting scheduled, and we'll have that before the end of school. So there's just a lot of work that's ongoing. Uh, but it's been real positive, and I think it's going well. We've got representatives from parents and staff from almost every building and, along with existing members that we've had in the past. So it's, it's going, I think it's going well. Happy to answer any questions? Happy to sit down.
Quick question. If you haven't already, uh, can you, uh, take some time to explain to the committee, um, what, um, board members and district staff can and cannot do, uh, leading up to a levy and the importance of citizen involvement, um, just to make sure that they're aware, aware of that concept?
Uh, as a district employer, as a district board member, uh, well, our, our really job is to just to provide information. Um, I know Jen could speak probably better to the PDC requirements in terms of, I know that you can, as an individual, wear a button and things, but you, we're not in the position to really advocate, other than providing information and what you would normally advocate. But going out and, and, um, saying both yes and that kind of, that's really not the role. I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about.
Well, I just want to make sure that they understand that. So, you know, coming to the recommendation for a capital levy, that, um, there's going to have to be a citizens committee that, that will have to get involved. So just so they, they understand that and can spread that word.
Correct. Yeah. And, and, uh, a lot of the members of the committee, uh, on their own could be, they can participate through the yes campaign. But yeah, they're, they're, if there's a citizens group, there likely will need to be a citizens group to do that. There, typically that happens. If the district can't lead that process.
Exactly.
Well, Mike, your comments don't fall on deaf ears, cause that's the last PTA meeting at Vinland. The representative from Vinland, he shared how wonderful he thought it was to be on the committee. And he learned so much about financing and what our bills district needs. And that's a great way to get the information out to people that would not normally pay attention to budget reports.
Yeah. I think, uh, it's, it's great to have members of the, the staff at the schools and parents from the schools, um, clearly bringing messages back to their PTAs. And we're not trying to feed anybody a message. Uh, we're just trying to provide information and then as a group come up with, uh, recommendations. And I think that, that thus far it's going well. And I think honestly, what we're doing is just answering a lot of questions that come up and, and having, I think people know that we're, we're happy to answer whatever questions come our way.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the time. Please pass her. Thanks on to the committee and their time that, uh, they're volunteering for this effort. Um, and, um, I appreciate their recommendation. Um, I think I would be, um, you know, interested in hearing more about, you know, um, what they think are possible projects, funding values that would lead to a, a capital levy so we can continue to explore that option here in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. That concludes the board reports. Um, there, um, there's no additional public comments, and, uh, there will be no executive session this evening.
I have a question. Can you confirm that consent agenda? Cause there's some people who are confused about that.
Sorry, we're not doing public comments. Uh, the time is zero, is seven twenty-six PM. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
You are confused how you voted in 2018, and then you didn't address public comments. How, where did you meet to discuss who you were going to go for? Did you just, you just meet one-on-one so you don't have to comply with the PMA?
Yeah, you do the public, uh, public comments.
How do you, how do you, you're supposed to conduct your discussions like you did the calendar. You had a lot to say about the calendar. Like you did not address four equal concerns about... By saying a lending league may have a connection to people who are hiring them. What did you tell me?
You have to listen.
Do you text?
So long.
You didn't even write those off there for slow recommendations.
All right. Thank you guys.
Say it.
Wow.
Do you text each other?